A June meeting of the Suffolk City Planning Commission come to order. I will call on Commissioner Edwards for the invocation.
Let us pray. God, we thank you that you are the ancient of days. But we thank you, God, that you are as present in this moment. And you walk with us and you talk with us and you lead us into all truth. God, we ask today that you will breathe on us and illuminate our minds, our souls, our bodies to your truth. God, we ask that you would give us your wisdom. Give us your eyesight. Give us your ears to listen. God, we thank you that you are the great architect of the universe. And you plan and you put things together. And so, God, we just ask that you will give us some of that insight. And help those who have visions and plans or things they want to do in the city. And we ask, God, that you will bless those endeavors. Thank you, God, for your staff and the people who you have anointed and gifted with the ability to see the intricate details of the slightest plans and give recommendations and insights on how to make things better. And God, we just ask that as we sit together and discuss together the future of our city, God, that it will represent your world in your way. God, we thank you for our leadership and we thank you, Lord, for the years that he has been our leader and our guide and our comforter and to always lead us into the right paths. And God, we ask that you bless all those who have sat on this dais before and those who will come after. And God, we ask that you would touch and bless our great cities. In your wonderful and master's name, we do pray this day. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Pittinger, will you call a roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer?
Here.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Here.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards?
Commissioner Goodwin?
Here.
Commissioner Hicks? Chairman Singleton?
Here.
Commissioner Staler?
Here.
Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. Are there any corrections to the minutes from the May meeting? If not, they will stand as presented. We will now move to the agenda items. We had five items on our agenda. One item has been withdrawn as resigning request, RZN 2024-0016, conditional Hillpoint Town has been withdrawn. The public hearings are for thirty minutes, ten minutes for the proponents, fifteen minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal. This meeting is videotaped for televised viewing for the television and public viewing. The first item on our agenda this afternoon will be conditional use permit request, CUP 2025-0008, 813 West Constance Road. Ms. Pittinger, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This is CUP 2025-0008, 813 West Constance Road, submitted by Dwight James, Golden Lux LLC applicant on behalf of Suffolk West Plaza LLC, property owner. In accordance with Sections 31-304, 31-406, let me repeat, Sections 31, 306, and Sections 31, 406 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish an amusement, entertainment, recreation center indoor on property located at 813 West Constance Road, Suite B, zoning map 34G, 15 parentheses 1, and 34G, 16 parentheses 2, Parcel F and Parcel C* D. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk Voting Barrel, Zone B2, General Commercial Zoning District. The 2045 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the central growth area, commercial corridor land use type. Staff planner Shannon Wolf presenting staff's report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. The application before you is a conditional use permit to establish amusement, entertainment, recreation center indoor use and live entertainment past 10:00 PM use in Suites B and C of the Suffolk West Plaza Shopping Center on property Zone B2, General Commercial. The city's 2045 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as a part of the central growth area, commercial corridor land use type. The subject parcels are identified as 813 West Constance Road, Suites B and C, located in the Suffolk West Plaza Shopping Center. To the north of the property is a railroad right-of-way as well as single-family detached homes in the Boston subdivision, Zone B2, General Commercial, and RC Residential Compact. To the south are various businesses, Zone CBD, Central Business District, as well as single-family detached homes in the Lakeside subdivision, Zoned RM, Residential Medium Density. To the east are Quarry Park Apartments and Washington Village Apartments, single-family homes and various businesses, Zone CBD, Central Business District, RU Residential Urban, and RM Residential Medium Density. To the west is the Lipton T Industrial Complex, Zoned M1 Light Industrial. Exhibit C outlines the suites to be covered by the CUP. The facility will include a skating rink, trampolines, and a place for arcade games catering to patrons of all ages. The subject property is located in an existing shopping center that currently houses a variety of established commercial, office, and service uses. Suites B and C previously housed the sluggers batting cages that closed in 2015, and the proposed use is no more intense than the current or previously approved uses on the subject property. The proposed use is not anticipated to increase traffic or impede the orderly development of the surrounding property, nor should it compromise public interest or welfare. Occupancy of Suites B and C within the shopping center should promote orderly development and improvement of the surrounding areas. Operations will be staffed by approximately ten employees, including security personnel, floor staff, and concession attendants. Entertainment offerings include DJs, theme nights, birthday parties, and private event rentals. The applicant also proposes to serve bottled alcoholic beverages with alcohol sales being restricted to designated areas and requiring age verification. While the city does not regulate alcohol sales, the applicant must comply with all applicable state regulations and obtain the necessary license from Virginia Alcoholic Beverage Control Authority. Food service will consist of quick-serve items such as pre-cooked wings, nachos, hot dogs, pre-made pizza, candy, and snacks. All items will be prepackaged or pre-cooked and reheated on-site in accordance with local health department standards. No on-site frying or full-scale cooking will occur. While the applicant has proposed the following hours of operation, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Wednesday and Sunday, 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Friday and Saturday, 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM, and alternate Wednesday hours of 2:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Staff would like to bring your attention to condition number two. The hours of operation shall be limited to Sunday through Thursday from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and Friday and Saturday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 AM midnight. This is consistent with other live entertainment uses in the downtown area. The Departments of Public Utilities, Public Works Engineering Division, Public Works Traffic Engineering, and the Bureau of Fire have all reviewed this request and expressed no concerns at this time. In conclusion, this conditional use permit satisfies the criteria set forth in Section 31-306 and 31-406 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit request, CUP 2025-0008, with the conditions included in staff report. This concludes my presentation. I will stand by for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Planning Commission members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity today to speak and for reviewing our request for our conditional use permit. I want to start by saying that we truly appreciate the staff's recommendation for approval. We've been reviewing the conditions and are committed to meeting all the safety zoning and operational standards set forth by the city. However, we are respectfully requesting a revision to Condition Two specifically regarding our hours of operations. We are asking to remain open to 2:00 AM on Friday and Saturday instead of closing at midnight. There are two major reasons why. First, there are few safe, family-oriented venues in Suffolk that stay open late. Our extended hours will allow us to hold structure events such as tea nights, private parties, and lock hands and adult skate nights. These events, type of events, are the same as other skating rinks in the area as far as Virginia Beach, Greenbrier. They all stay open to 2:00 AM. If we want to compete with those skating rinks, we need to open up at the same time. These events provide a positive supervised environment during times when many youth and otherwise are left without the safe recreational options. This is about offering safety and engagement, not just entertainment. Second, these late night hours are essential for sustainability of our business model. Weekend events will drive the majority of our revenue and allow us to support at least ten to fifteen local jobs, including youth and part-time workers. Our goal is not just to run a skatering. We want to build a vibrant, safe, and inclusive space for families, young people, and the Suffolk community at large. Let me also briefly explain why we are opening Golden Lux Arena. Suffolk needs more positive indoor family recreational options. Our facility will be more than a place to skate. It will be a space where people can gather for fun, fitness, fellowship. Our mission is to provide affordable and accessible entertainment, create job and mentorship opportunities for our youth, and build a true community hub where everyone feels welcome and safe. If someone is looking for true love or simply meaningful relationships in our community, they shouldn't feel like their only options are a bar or nightclub or leaving the city altogether. Go to Lux Arena offers a positive alternate, a place where people of all ages can come together, be themselves, and connect over shared experiences. Whether it's a couple on a first date or friends meeting new people at a themed skate night, our venue encourages real connections in a wholesome environment. We are fully committed to meeting all CUP conditions, including regulations on safety, alcohol service, lighting, and digital surveillance. We want to be responsible, proactive partners, in making this project a success for the city and its residents. In closing, thank you again for your time, your service to the city, and supporting our efforts to bring meaningful, safe, and much-needed to the community of Suffolk. Thank you.
Before you leave the podium, young man, will you give us your name and your address, please?
Dwight James, 81, the address to the skatering?
Speak your name. Tell us your name and your address.
I'm the owner and Dwight James.
Give us your name, your given name, please.
Dwight James is my given name.
Dwight James?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mrs. James.
Thank you.
Is anyone else in the audience like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon. My name is Javon Smallwood and I reside at 400 Fennec Avenue, Suffolk, Virginia. When I heard about the skate rink, I was really excited about it. And so, I was so excited, I decided to contact ChatGPT and asked them what is their opinion of why we should approve such a request. Okay? And let me tell you what they said. When actually, the question that I posed are, what are three non-obvious reasons for approval? The first one was crime reduction and youth engagement. As the studies have shown, they provide instructive recreation activities like skating can reduce juvenile delinquency by keeping teens occupied in positive environments. Our rink can partner with schools and community programs to offer after-school skate session, mentorship opportunities, or even skate-based STEM programs. So, there's a wealth of opportunities there. It also says tourism and seasonal events diversification. And then the third one was mental health and social connections. So, all of these are very positive. They're not obvious, but there are definitely reasons for approval for this request.
Thank you, Mrs. Smallwood. We got about four minutes. Anyone else like to speak in favor of this request?
Hello, everyone. My name is Yvette Massey, and I just want to speak in favor of Dwight James. I've known Dwight since he was in junior high school. And I just want to say that Suffolk is very privileged to have him in our community today. He is a young man. He ran track. He is a fighter. He is someone who is enthusiastic. He coaches soccer. He crosses division lines culture-wise. He is someone in the community who is looking to do great things within the city of Suffolk. So, just my recommendation to each and everyone who is here and the board, this young man is an outstanding person. He's willing to work with others. If you get to know him, you would appreciate what he will bring to the city of Suffolk. If you're looking to do great things in the city of Suffolk, you definitely want Dwight James on your side and working with you because he is a visionary. So, that's what I just have to input today.
Thank you, ma'am. We got a few more minutes. Anyone else speak in favor of this request? Seeing none. Are there anyone in opposition to this request? Seeing none. Ms. James, do you have any additional comments you would like to make before I close the public hearing? Thank you. There is now closed the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or a motion? Together now.
To include the amended hours or not, just depending on the motion?
At this point, we will be voting on the staff report for the hours, midnight closing.
Okay.
That condition.
If that's the case, I would like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of approving CUP 2025-008 with staff conditions.
Got a motion for approval?
Second.
Got two seconds? Any discussion of the motions? Hearing none. Pittinger, will you call for the vote, please?
Right. Commissioners, prepare to vote. Please vote. All right. Chairman, the motion passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Back that up again.
Oh, I hit show vote. There we go. Ms. Hicks did not vote because she's not here.
Okay, okay.
That always throws me off.
Okay, good. Congratulations, Mrs. James and the group. This will go to City Council with a motion for approval on July 16th. Thanks again for your efforts. The next item on our agenda is the exception request, CEX 2025-007, 1878 Cherry Grove Road North. Ms. Pittinger, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Exception request, CEX 2025-0007, 1878 Cherry Grove Road North, submitted by Jonathan D. Thompson, applicant and property owner on behalf of Angela K. Thompson, property owner, in accordance with Section 31-415 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant an exception to the development criteria and buffer area requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area to permit the replacement and expansion of an existing deck within the Resource Protection Area Buffer on property located at 1878 North Cherry Grove Road, zoning map 4E parentheses 1, parcel 9. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Chukatack Voting Barrel, Zoned RE, Rural Estate Zoning District. The 2045 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area and designated as rural agricultural land use type. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution for a Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area exception request for property located at 1878 Cherry Grove Road North, zoning map 4E parentheses 1, parcel 9, account number 2504544400, CEX 2025-007. Sorry. Staff planner Isabel Reynolds will be presenting staff's report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. This exception request is for the installation of a deck within the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer for property located at 1878 Cherry Grove Road North, located within the Cherry Grove Estates. The 2045 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area and Rural Agricultural Land Use Type. The subject property is Zoned Rural Estate and is 1.61 acres in size. The property has tidal wetlands that are connected to Brewers and Chukatack Creek. The creeks eventually flow into the James River thereby requiring the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer. The property is surrounded to the north, south, and west by single-family dwelling Zoned Rural Estate, and to the east is Brewer and Chukatack Creek and tidal wetlands Zoned Rural Estate. The property owner is proposing to remove the current existing deck and replace it with an enlarged deck. The proposed deck will be attached to the primary dwelling unit, which was established in 1980 prior to the enactment of the Bay Act. Majority of the primary dwelling is within the 50-foot landward portion of the buffer. There is a small corner of the house that encroaches within the 50-foot seaward portion of the buffer. The applicant is proposing to install a 1,088-square-foot deck within the 50-foot landward portion of the buffer. The existing deck is 410 square feet in size. The applicant states that the deck will be elevated with minimal impact on the ground. The total amount of land disturbance generated is 1,088 square feet. The proposed deck does not meet the minimum necessary to afford relief, and the new proposed deck is more than doubling the existing structure of the current deck. Therefore, staff is recommending denial. Any disturbance generated from the installation of the deck will require vegetation be placed back within the buffer. A buffer mitigation plan was provided and shows three units of vegetation to offset the impacts of the new and previous cover and land disturbance generated by the construction process. Staff finds that the exception request to install a deck within the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer does not satisfy the criteria outlined in Section 31-415 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends denial of exception request, CEX 2025-007. Should the request be considered with a motion of approval, staff has provided recommended conditions outlined in the staff report. I will be standing by for any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Brian Lang, 7021 Harborview Boulevard. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant. He couldn't be here today, but I'm acting as his agent. The first thing I did was act as a surveyor. We received the call in February, so he didn't gee whiz his way here. He's been looking at this for quite some time. And frankly, I think when he got the recommendation for denial, you could have knocked him over with a feather. But he understands the process. He's in the development community, so of course, he understands the buffer and the requirements staff has to follow in the ordinance. So, here we are. Now, really what we're asking for is the permission to build a deck. Just about, you can look at the maps, and just about the entire house lies within the 100-foot buffer. The existing deck is wood. You know, wood doesn't last forever. It needs to be replaced. So, they did look at building it bigger. That is true, and that's why we're here. I would suppose we're here because we're building a bigger deck. So, if you look at this objectively, the owner has, he's really gone through a timeframe and an expense. The expense being hiring a CBPA delineator to go out and delineate the wetlands, hiring a surveyor to go locate everything to show it, fill out the minor water quality impact assessment. It will continue with the construction of the deck and then also with the installment of planning materials to mitigate if this is approved. So, I want to take a moment just to talk about what we feel is the merit of the application. And as staff said, I can't add anything to that. The lot was platted 15 years ago. The house was built 10 years ago, and there's always been a buffer. There will always be a buffer, and staff is doing the right thing by following the ordinance and making me stand before you today. But let's look at this a little more technically. There is nowhere, if you look at it, there is nowhere else where he can put a deck unless, out of the 100-foot buffer, unless we put it on the front of the house. That don't work. Put it on the side of the house, on the garage side, that doesn't really work. So, we have to put it on the back. So, like I said, we're asking for an addition. So, what does that addition mean? The numbers are correct. It's 1,088 square feet is what we're proposing, and it's about 410 square feet now. So, that equates to 678 square feet of additional deck area. Now, going through, if we were to continue this further... Now, going through, if we were to continue this further as a designer and understanding CBPA, the whole purpose of the CBPA ordinance is to reduce a pollutant load, phosphorus. So how much phosphorus does this create with an addition? 0.01 pounds per year, per year. We're talking less than a thimble that we're talking about the encroachment area as far as the pollutant load that's being projected and requested. But this isn't about, like, why are we here? This is here, we're here because we know the process. And he knows he can bring this before you, and you have the right to deny it, and he'll have to go back to the drawing board. But he didn't come up with the size of the deck the way you see it today. It actually started way over to the side of the house and went into the 50-foot RPA buffer. We did advise him just stay out of the buffer, stay out of the 50-foot buffer, keep everything in the landward. So he went back and they came up with this design with what they wanted to build. So I guess we come down to really what's the definition of minimal relief? He feels like he's done it. Staff feels like he hasn't done it, so that's really the question in front of you today. And we enjoyed working with staff. You know, we went back and forth, and we talked about all these points. But it has to be acted on this way, and I'll sit aside. If you have any questions, I'll try and answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Is there anyone else who's speaking in favor of this request? Seeing none, hearing none. Is there anyone speaking opposition? None, hearing none. Ms. Lang, you have any additional comments you would like to make? Okay. I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or a motion?
Ms. Lang, I do have a question. Did I hear you correctly when you said that in the design process, obviously the whole house, I rode out yesterday and took a look at it, and the deck is gone. I mean, they've evidently already demolished the deck because there is no deck on the back of the house at the present time. But that being said, the house is in the 100-foot other than a corner and the 100-foot easement, correct? And the deck is now designed so that it will not encroach on the 50-foot line, correct? All right. And then the requirements were put in there if for some reason this is passed that some mitigation or planning some additional greenery will take place, correct? Okay. That's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Lang, remain there for a second. Any other question for Ms. Lang while he's at the podium? Thank you, Ms. Lang.
Why is the deck not being rebuilt with the same specs as it currently has?
I asked him the same thing. When he started putting it over to the left and getting into the seaward portion of the buffer, I said, why you need it so big? And he went through of how they really enjoy the backyard, and it is a beautiful view. Commissioner, you are out there. They're going to spend a lot of time there. And that's the only answer I have. He wants a bigger deck to enjoy what he sees on the aesthetics.
Meg, you might. We talked a little bit about this earlier when we met. The property, this particular lot or this subdivision, was actually put in place before they had the Chesapeake Bay Act correctly.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And that came in, in what, 1987?
October 1st, 1989.
Eighty-nine. So this subdivision was actually approved, I think, in 80, something like that. So I presume that's why the house was allowed to be built in its location. There were no restrictions against that at that time.
There was no Chesapeake Bay buffer when it was built.
And also the deck that was on there would not have had any, the same requirements had been put on after the house was built.
If it was built when the house was built or prior to the Bay Act, yes.
Okay, thank you, Meg.
Make sure I understand. Just on that same line of thought. So if the deck would have been rebuilt at the 400 mark, would we be here?
No, we could do that administratively if they were staying in the footprint.
So basically, we're here because you want to go 150% above what we already have from 400 to 600? Okay. Thank you.
Comments or a motion?
I'm going to make a motion for approval of CEX 2025-007.
Motion for approval?
I'll second it.
Do we have a second? Any discussion of the motion?
I just wanted to add, I mean, I think we do take every application individually, and we look at it solely for what it is. But I mean, I've seen us approve some more invasive things like in-ground swimming pools, and this, just to me, while it is an expansion, seems less invasive, and that's why I'm for it.
Comments?
It's point of order, and that's why I vote against them. I just want you to know that. I don't vote for any of them.
Care what you're saying?
No, I said, no, I mean, I was listening to my fellow commissioner. And her argument was that we have voted for things like indoor swimming pools that are a lot more invasive, and I just wanted to be in the record. I vote against all of them, and I will be consistent.
Thank you. Call for the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, prepare to vote. Please vote. Mr. Right, but... Mr. Chairman, the item has a pass by of six to one.
That's my life.
Ms. Lang, you can tell the Thompsons that there's no further action, and they have the mitigation process. They can start digging. You got approval.
Please get permits.
You need to permit, so. Okay. The next item is, I've got to turn the page. On this text amendment, OTA 2025-004. Ms. Peddinger, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This is ordinance text amendment OTA 2025-004, initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of the City of Suffolk, Section 31-707 Home Occupation, subsection 31-707C of the Unified Development Ordinance. The purpose of this text amendment is to update and refine the Code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31, Unified Development Ordinance. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council related to ordinance text amendment OTA 2025-004. Our Assistant Director of Community Development, Jennifer Cobb, will be presenting staff's report.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm going to present the text amendment for the change in the home food preparation. A little bit of the background for this. City Council had asked Planning Commission and city staff to take a look at this to allow food preparation within the home as in accordance with the state code. Standards exist in the UDO to ensure that home occupations are compatible with and do not have any negative effects on adjacent property owners in the residential areas. So certain home occupations are permitted as an accessory use in dwelling units within residential zoning districts. The Unified Development Ordinance has standards in place to ensure compatibility with residential uses as well as allowing small personal businesses to operate within the home. As you see, a home occupation is defined as an accessory use of a dwelling unit for or with the intent of employment involving the provisions of goods and services. So currently, the type of home occupations we allow within the home are small offices, one-chair beauty salons, online sales that does not have customers coming and going from the home. So basically, very low-volume, low-intense uses currently. What we do not allow out of the home are high-intense uses such as motor vehicle repairs, gymnastic facilities, metalworking, retail sales, and commercial food preparations such as catering. There's also other ones that are listed. We have made a simple change to the Unified Development Ordinance. As you can see, what is listed in red, so you can see, it states, "A home occupation shall be operated and maintained to not interfere with the peace, quiet, and dignity of the neighborhood." The following are examples of uses which would be acceptable as home occupations: low-volume office, insurance, realty, one-chair beauty shop, seamstress instructions, word processing and other community applications, and we've also added in red, "and food processing and preparation in private homes in accordance with Code, Section of Virginia 3.25130C, with no sales on the premise." So basically, this will allow the home operator to have food products in the home that don't require any temperature-controlled settings. So there's going to be no home inspections or anything like that, and that could be anything from baked goods, jellies, jams, pickles. There's a list of stuff that is included within the state code. And I'm available for any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb.
Looks like you have a question.
We're going to have a...
After the public hearing.
You're going to have a public hearing first. We're going to open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request in addition to Ms. Cobb? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience in opposition to this text amendment? I will now close the public hearing. And now, Commissioners, questions, comments, or a motion?
Yeah. So if someone is selling dinners out their house, they can't sell dinners out their house. Then it's not a business, maybe a fundraiser, a one-time thing.
We would not allow dinners to be sold out of the house. Something like fried chicken or any type of pasta preparation, anything that has to be temperature-regulated. So nothing like that, that you're going to be cooking out of the house like that.
I can't vote for this.
Basically, it's to make sure that it's nothing that the Health Department would have to come in and inspect for a commercial kitchen.
Well, I understand that, but you have individuals who supports their local 501Cs through a dinner sale. And nine times out of 10, there are people who are looking at this, and if they see a neighbor having a dinner sale, the next thing you know, you all going to be getting a call because somebody is doing something illegal. And this may be a one-time dinner sale. So no, I can't support this.
Could do it, something like that in conjunction with a church. We've seen stuff like that happen.
I know at churches, you know, they bring things. Well, in order to do that, they have to bring it into the church. They can't cook it at the church unless they got a private kitchen that you can prepare stuff. So I think, I mean, I understand what's being set out to accomplish, but in a lot of our neighborhoods, oftentimes, people live and eat by this from one week to another. So I understand where this is going, and I respect where this is going because it's a good thing. There's not nothing bad about it at all. But I think it could, something else could be done in that perspective of those who are not trying to make a living, are trying to make a restaurant out their house. But they are doing it, you know, from time to time.
Looking for a motion?
Excuse me, Ms. Cobb, I have a question. That's for my clarification. Piggybacking on what Commissioner Goodman said, in his scenario, if we said no to this, would that still, with his scenario, would that be allowed now?
No.
So in both scenarios, it wouldn't be allowed?
Correct.
Taking anything away.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification.
And I would just say, it's worth noting that City Council did request that the prohibition on sales in the house be part of the ordinance.
This might be a dumb question, but this clearly doesn't include folks that are preparing things that are then sold at another location, like a church for a bake sale at a church or a farmer's market or...
So with this provision, baked goods could be made in the home. There's just no sales at...
Right, it's not sold there. Correct, got it.
So they could be carried off and sold at a farmer's market at the church or school or whatever.
I got you.
Or online.
So in other words...
Some money you just can't change hands at the...
Okay, so they can prepare their dinners, take them outside, and get the money from outside. Okay.
You're saying prepare dinners. That gets a little bit of gray area.
I know, I know. I'm just, I mean, I'm... I understand it. I understand it 100%. I do. But I say it one more time, that in some of our communities, there are individuals who sometime they make their living or they get a chance to add to their income by maybe selling a few dinners out their house. They're not running a business out their house, but this is an opportunity. You might have a light bill due. The cheerer might need a new pair of shoes. Telephone might be almost disconnect, you know, so they'll still do it, but...
I make a motion?
If I make a motion, I'm going to make a motion to deny it and everything that goes along with it. So that's my motion. If I can get a second or not.
I have a second.
Got a motion and a second for denial? Any discussion of the motion? Ms. Peddinger, you call for the vote?
Yes, sir.
A yes is for denial, and a no is not for denial.
I don't know that I necessarily want to go on record as keeping from people from selling food out of their homes. I feel like that's a little bit out of my wheelhouse as a planning commissioner. Is that what we're doing here?
Trying to follow the state, what's already in the state law for as far as preserves, pickling, pickling, and that type of stuff.
The state exempts certain types of food preparation from inspection. That's what that state code section is referring to. State code is not talking about selling or otherwise. That's a local thing. And currently, you cannot sell food products out of your home.
It's a food safety.
It's a food safety thing, that section, and that was what was requested to allow those people who are preparing those non-perishable foods, baked goods, pickles, jellies and jams, to be able to prepare them in their homes because they can't do those now and sell them elsewhere, say, online or at the farmer's market or whatever. That's what this ordinance amendment would do, is allow those individuals doing that as a business to do that. Currently, they can't do that. That's considered a commercial food preparation, right? So under this slim exemption in the state code for inspection, the Health Department does not have to come and inspect those types of food because there's a low safety issue according to the Department of Consumer Services, Agriculture and Consumer Services, which is a state agency. It's a low risk. And so this would allow those individuals wanting to do that as a home occupation, this is not about commercial businesses, to do that as a home occupation. Currently, they come to zoning and say, I want to do this. Zoning has to turn them down. They can't do that, right? Preparing perishable foods such as dinners, you can't do that now, and you still won't be able to do that in the future because, again, there's health, safety things, and it's also, again, the home occupations are intended to be low-impact businesses that are run that you can't tell from the outside that there's a business running in there. Having a stream of customers coming to the back door to buy donuts that you might be making in the back door, that's an impact to the neighborhood, and that's why home occupations are supposed to be quite limited. If you're operating a commercial business, a big one, should be going to a commercial location, right? Again, this is a narrow allowance for those folks that are making those products now that are non-perishable essentially according to the state code to be able to do that on their property and not have to go to a commercial kitchen because the state says you don't have to have the Health Department come inspect these things. So that's what this ordinance will allow. So we're ready to vote? We have a motion for denial?
Yes means denial, no means the other way. Yes means denial, no means the other way.
All right. We clear?
Clear.
All right. Please vote. All right. So the motion has failed by a vote of six to one, with Commissioner Goodman opposing. So this item, so... Okay. So we need an alternate motion.
I'll make a motion for approval of OTA 2025-004.
I'll second it.
Got a second? Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Pedding, do you call for the vote?
All right. Let's vote again.
A yes means yes.
Yes means yes. Commissioners, please vote. Chairman, the vote has passed by a vote of six to one, with Mr. Goodman voting in opposition.
This will go to City Council for consideration on July 16th. Ms. Cobb, you can do it again.
She'll be glad to know that me or Kevin will be doing it at City Council.
The next item on our agenda and our last item is Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2025-005. Ms. Pedding, will you read the caption, please?
All right. Last one. This is Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2025-005, initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of the City of Suffolk, Section 31-506, Classification of Applications and General Procedural Requirements, subsection 31-506D of the Unified Development Ordinance. Purpose of this Ordinance Text Amendment is to update and refine the Code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31, Unified Development Ordinance. When you act upon this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to send a, to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2025-05. And I am going to walk you through this with Shannon moving the slides for me. And this item, I will note, is going to be fast-tracked to City Council tomorrow so that it can be in place before July 1st. So the General Assembly passed a House Bill 2660 that amended state code sections 15.22259 and 15.22260 of the Code of Virginia regarding the maximum number of days that localities have to act on proposed plats and site plans. In state code, plats and site plans are considered the same and are regulated the same. The state code change also speaks to the methods that must be used, including how staff has to identify all deficiencies on the plat or the plan and respond that to the applicant. The state code change also specifies the number of days that we have to act when it is subsequently, the plan or plat is subsequently resubmitted. Next slide, please. So in this code section that we are proposing to amend, 31-506, it references those two state code sections, 15.22259 and 15.22260, that were amended, and indicates that application shall be processed in the time period that specified. For convenience, it also had the times listed in there. And so we are proposing to remove that language since the state code sections are already referenced so that should they amend this code in the future, which we are hoping that they will because it significantly shortens the amount of time that staff has to review these plans, which are already quite complex, that we won't have to come back and amend this code again. So we're just going to remove the time limits from this section. And then if you go to the next slide, from the table that follows it, that shows the number of days. We're keeping this table in because it indicates who the Approval Authority, Approval Agent is, which is the director for most things, but is the Planning Commission for family subdivisions. So we're keeping the table, but just removing the number of days. And there's a bunch of notes that are shown underneath this table in the UDO. We're just deleting all of those as well because they are, again, referring back to those state code sections. So essentially, that's what it is. We don't love this Ordinance Text Amendment because it kills us on time, but this will get the UDO in line with state code that does become effective on July 1st. So again, this is going to City Council tomorrow. That doesn't mean you have pressure to go one way or the other, but we're going to present it tomorrow to City Council, and I will update them with what your recommendation is today. And I will stand by for any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Pedding. Can I open the public hearing? Is anyone other than Ms. Pedding in favor of this request?
No one's in favor of this request.
Is there anyone in opposition? Seeing none in the hearing, none. And I'll close the public hearings. Commissioners, questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval of, excuse me, OTA 2025-005, I'm sorry.
Got a second?
Any discussion on the motion?
Can you recall the roll, please?
All right. Let's...
And this will go to City Council tomorrow.
Yes, sir. Please vote, Commissioners. Chairman, the motion has passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Congratulations. You got your work cut off for you tomorrow.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
The next item we have, do we have any old business? I don't think we have any.
No old business.
New business?
We've got the City Council meeting. Feels like it was forever ago. We had rezoning requests, RZN 2024-10, which is the Hall and Glen rezoning. They requested a deferral during the May meeting for the June 18th meeting. They have subsequently requested another deferral, so that actually will not be heard tomorrow night at City Council. We have rezoning requests, RZN 2024-12, which was the car dealerships over there on Lynn Drive off of Bridge Road. That was approved with some amended proffers. Then we had conditional use permit, CUP 2024-0023, the Adult Day Support on North Main Street. The applicant had requested a deferral to the June 18th City Council meeting, so that will be heard tomorrow night at City Council. And then we had the Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2024-007, which was that whole laundry list of amendments related to bringing the UDO into compliance with, or the, into, because of the changes to the comprehensive plan. So that's what was approved at City Council in May. And I do have a couple of preliminary plats that were approved. We've got preliminary subdivision plat, 2024-0001, which is Tillman Run. Previously, this was Lake Kilby over there, near Lake Kilby and Lake Cajune. This was rezoned to RRM Residential Medium Zoning Density Conditional. This will consist of 204 single-family residential lots. There's going to be two areas, two distinct areas in subdivision. Part of it is going to be a conventional residential subdivision. And the lots will have a minimum of at least 10,000 square feet. And the other part will be a cluster subdivision with the minimum lot size of 5,865 square feet. Collectively, they have to provide 21.4 acres of open space, and they are providing 35.6 total acres of open space. The property was rezoned through RZN 2021-018, which was approved in August of 2023. And no action is required on either of these preliminary plats. These are for your information only. Preliminary subdivision plat, 2025-0001, Art Ray at Millstone, which is over on Turlington Road, kind of backs up to the Davis Lakes Campground. This is a proposed cluster subdivision. It's located in the RLM Residential Low-Medium Zoning District. And it will consist of 147 detached single-family residential lots. There is a considerable amount of critical areas, wetlands on this property, so they have about 61.374 acres that are developable. The lots will be 6,600 square feet. And the density will be, will result, the resulting density will be 1.91 units per acre. The maximum allowable in the RLM is 2.9, so they're well under that. This preliminary subdivision plat does precede, does supersede a couple of previous preliminary plats that won. The original one was done in May 15th of 2007, so a long time ago. And then previously, one there was approved in 2024. Most of it, the changes were about the location of the stormwater pond. As I mentioned, there are some critical areas. So making the stormwater pond be able to function required them to make some changes. And again, no action is required. And before we go on to any commissioner comments, we do have a special recorded message that we would like to play.
Chairman Singleton, I could not be there for your last meeting of the Planning Commission after 25 years. I apologize. But I did want to express my sincere gratitude to you for the many years that you have put in to the very important public service that is serving on our Planning Commission. So much has happened over that 25 years that you've been a part of the Planning Commission, and we are very grateful for all the work that you have done. We are going to miss you a great deal and wish you the best in whatever the next steps are in your life. But we are forever grateful for what you've done. I'm going to miss a few things about you in particular when you would tap your pencil at me frantically to start the timer for public hearings. I will definitely miss that. And whenever you would see a last name and just not even give it an attempt to pronounce and instead refer to them by their first name. But we wish you the best of luck in whatever you have in store next. But thank you so much for providing your service to the Planning Commission. Public service is a thankless job, and the fact that you've been at it for 25 years with us is certainly a testament to who you are. I don't want to take too much time because I know Commissioner Edwards will have some words for you as well. So with that, on behalf of the Department of Planning and Community Development, the City of Suffolk, and the Planning Commission, thank you for your 25 years.
Mr. Chairman, before Johnny gets his chance, Arthur, I've been on for almost 10 years. And Arthur had more than that time served when I came here. So I think when we were talking, we've had the opportunity for the last, I guess, two years to sit down and meet with Kevin and the staff prior to the meeting. So I really got to know Arthur a lot better since we've been having the side meetings. And Kevin would keep us waiting outside, so we had a chance to check, to find out what the wives were doing, the children were doing, and the things that bothered us. So I got to, feel like I got to know Arthur over the last 10 years. Arthur reviews the agenda every month. And I know he visits the properties in most cases because I bumped into him on a couple occasions, and we talked through the window to each other. And so we had a good chat. So I know he took this job very serious and spends the time necessary to have done a great job for the citizens of the city. Arthur, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you over the last 10 years out of your 26 and a half years, I think you told me. So thank you so much for your service.
I've got a comment. I want to thank you for everything you've done. Vivently remember the day I met you was on site with Mr. Singleton, I mean Mills. Anyway, it was at Decoys. It was prior to me being sworn in. And so I just want to thank you. And I don't think anybody on this commission hadn't learned a ton from you. So again, thank you for everything you've done in all 26 and a half years, I believe you said, correct? Okay. Thank you so much for everything you've done.
I'll hop in before you do. But I would just thank you, Chairman Singleton, for welcoming me. When I first came on, I was quite nervous. It was a lot of people that have been here for quite some time. And I appreciate you encouraging me to ask questions, to speak when it's appropriate, and just to lead with so much dignity and grace and to make every person that comes to the podium feel seen and heard. And you give everybody, everyone you encounter, the equal amount of respect as a human being. So that's something that I've always appreciated and admired. So thank you for your service.
I understand I can go now. I asked for his permission. But I appreciate you. I thank you. You have been a good example ever since I've been on the board. I met you when we built our building back in, I say, when 2000, I believe it was. I had to come before you all during that time. Not knowing it, this day, I'd be looking at you from a different perspective. But we appreciate you, appreciate your time. And I told him earlier that when I get his age, I'm going to be looking just as good. I'm going to be just as smart and just as brilliant as he is right now. You're my role model.
Before Johnny gets going, I'd just like to congratulate you on being able, after 26 and a half years, to be able to graduate for the next, whatever it is that you're going to be doing. You're going to be missed. I haven't been on this group for that long a period of time. But I'll tell you, I was on the, you know, I've been on the board for a while. And since you have been the chairman of this group, I felt more comfortable about what we have been doing with your leadership. I felt comfortable in doing, again, serving on this commission. And I just wish you the best for your next step. And all of us have learned a lot working with you on this group. So best of luck to you.
I'm really tempted just to say thank you. No. I'll tell the story. I was 31 when I started on the Planning Commission. I replaced Donald Mills, and Donald Mills was beloved. And I was very young. And it was a very tight group that you was coming into. And I came in alone. It was just me that year. And I came to my first meeting, I read my packet. I'm going somewhere with this story. And, you know, you think you know something, and you've read it, and you analyzed it. And so we got to the first vote. And it was some kind of rezoning of a property. And, you know, you're like, yeah, I think I'm going to vote a certain way. And Mr. Singleton, you know, he pointed the pencil, and they showed it on the screen. And he pointed to some bushes in the back of the property and was explaining why those bushes was off. And I took my packet out, and you know, you have to open it and expand it. And I said, who notices the bushes? And you know how you just realize, man, this is so, there's so much more to this than just a R and a Z. And I remember my girlfriend at the time, we finished, she was in the audience. And she said, whatever you do, Johnny, for as long as you up here, you follow him. And I want to say this, Mr. Singleton, as, you know, someone who's been up here for a while, not as long as, you know, others. But you've been here when the Planning Commission was 14 members. You saw it shrink down. You've seen a lot of us come and go. And you have been the steady rock of this Planning Commission. When we go back and look at the comprehensive plans of our city, one name has been consistent, Arthur Singleton. And I think it's fitting that when someone goes through the history of our city and they look back at the record, the name they will see is Arthur Singleton. And this has been one of the greatest honors of my time to say that I served with you. And I will say this, you know, as a young person in it, you never said it... And, and I will say this, you know, as, as a young person in it, you've never said it, but I feel like you and our colleagues, and I appreciate you pushing me to study more and to ask the right questions and to think about things differently. That means a lot for someone who looks like me to have somebody like you to look up to. And I want to say that personally and publicly to the whole City of Suffolk. And I, I want to say this, before I close my remarks, you replaced Howard Benton. And Howard Benton was an institution on our committee, on our commission. And you did such a great job as a transition and we never felt like we was all off balance. We never felt like we didn't know what we was doing. You kept things smooth and you kept us respectable. And I pray that for us who remain, that we make sure this commission lives up to the standards that you and Mr. Benton has laid and that we always a body that people respect. And I wish you nothing but the best. Now, again, I didn't mean to talk this long. I did, I did it, but it means a lot to call you a friend and you definitely will hear from me more and more throughout the years. Thank you, Mrs.
I jot it down in a couple of notes because I, once I start, I go off. On the track that I want to be on. It has been my honor to serve the City of Suffolk as a planning commission for 26 and a half years. I just want to thank those who aided my journey, beginning with the late Rufus Powell, who who accepted my resume and appointed me to the commission January 1st, 1999. And I was reappointed by Councilman Calvin Jones and the late Jeff Gardy. Johnny mentioned the 14 to 7. When the council downsized from 14 to 7, Mayor Linda Johnson reappointed me at the, to the at-law position. And Mayor Mike Dumon reappointed me twice to this position and he tried twisting my arm to stay longer, but I told him it was time to go. The training that I received at the planning certification program gave me a new perspective on all land developments here in the city and wherever I travel. Wherever I go, I see things entirely different than I saw before, you know? I want to thank the late Fred Bowen and Howard Benton for their leadership and mentoring to me to become chairman with, with your endorsement. You know, they, they're mentoring, but you, the commissioners, is the one who nominated and voted for me. Thank you for that. I want to thank city manager Al Moore. He's the person that during the C I P, I always call on him getting support for Holland. I wonder when we're getting water and sewer. But then, he was elevated to city manager and I want to thank him for selecting an in-house planner in Kevin Wine to be our director rather than going outside of the city. And Kevin is doing an outstanding job. He even do videos remotely now. I also like to thank the planning staff for your assistance in answering my phone calls and answering my inquiries and making things seem clearer to me than they were when I was reading that package that Johnny was talking about. You know, it aided my, my decision-making. And I want to thank especially Ms. Katina Meyer, I'm going to stand up for this one, for all that she's done and has done for this commission. She keeps me on track. She always answer the phone and return phone calls. What you need, Mr. Singleton? Usually when I call, I need something and she knows and she always, she's always getting the information that I need, especially when we got these computers, you know, what you do now? But thank you, Ms. Katina Meyer, for all you do for this, for these commissioners and for the job you do in New York. Outstanding job and I assure everyone realize the weight that you carry and the input that you put into this commission. That's it, commissioners, thank you.